Alright, so otherwise, let's call to order the city council work session for July 6, 2021. You'll also find an agenda in Spanish on the city's website. And so, a roll call please, Sue.
Um, councillor McBride?
Here.
Councillor Cofield?
Here.
Councillor Yurinel Holloman?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Councillor Bacon? I know she was on here, Denise, oh, okay. Sorry, councillor Finley?
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Mayor, councillor Martinez Pankarte is absent.
Okay, thank you very much, Sue. Alright, item number three on our agenda, review of the council agenda and meeting. Any comments regarding this evening's business session? Alright, seeing none, what about the council business items? Alright, similarly seeing none. I think there will be one addition to our agenda under, under consent calendar, but we'll get to that when, when we do. So, otherwise, let's move on to presentations and, oh, sorry, Elise, go ahead.
Alright, could we have just space for acknowledgement of the farm worker that passed in St. Paul? Just a moment of silence or some acknowledgement of it, I think would be important.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I have a draft letter here too that was supposed to be sent out, so I can, I can read that draft to you all as well.
That would be perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, of course. Alright, anything else for, for this evening's business session? Alright, seeing none, let's go on to presentations, item 5A, and our good friends from Waste Management. And all of the Dave Hubers who are currently joining us this evening, so there we go.
Alright, yes, good evening, Mayor Rogers and city manager, city councillors, thanks for inviting us and having us part of the session tonight. So, with me, I've got my colleagues. Let's see, I'll start off with Mike Jeffries, our director of pricing. Evan Burmester, manager of pricing as well, Dean Kemper, public sector. Thank you, Dean, and Gary Nelson should be on, under the other Dave Huber box there, and there he is. So here we all are, and again, thanks for inviting us. And I don't know if if was city recorder gonna share the, there we go, thank you.
I was gonna share it, Dave, I, 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 can everybody see him on the PowerPoint now?
Cool. Thank you, Evan.
Yep.
Alright, so yeah, I think we got the introductions done, and go ahead and move over to slide number two, tonight's discussion. We're gonna cover Newburgh Services and Operations Report. The 2020 Annual Report. We want, we want to talk about and present the possibility of adding food scraps in with the yard debris program. That's been a topic of discussion for this past year or so. We've got some rate comparisons to show you, and then our request, and then any questions that you may have as well. And if you hit the next slide, I'll just touch on, on the numbers really quick. So, we service, and we're proud to service the city of Newburgh. Seventy percent of our operations out of Newburgh is, is the city of Newburgh itself. We also operate and service the city of Dundee, which equates to 10% of our overall operations. And then we have 20% of it is unincorporated Yamhill County outside the city limits of Newburgh and Dundee. We have 21 family waste jobs, we have 11 drivers. We, we also, of course, have the transfer station facility on Wynewski Road. And four general support staff there as well. So, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to our operations manager, Mr. Gary Nelson, who is at the site every day. And, Mr. Nelson, if you want to go ahead and take it away and kind of go into the details on the services for the city.
Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll cover the, the services for the city of Newburgh. We currently service 6,379 customers in the residential line of business. That's up about 149 customers from 2019. With that residential service, what we provide is garbage, recycling, yard debris, and as well as glass recycling. And with garbage, that is a weekly service that varies based on the customer needs, and it's a volume-based rate. With recycling, it's an every-other-week collection. And with all of these, the roll cards are provided, and yard debris as well is an every-other-week collection. And glass recycling is a subscription-based service that currently we have 3,231 of those 6,379 residential customers participating in, in the city of Newburgh, which is just over half. And that, that roll card's also provided by us. For our commercial business customers, we currently have, or in 2020, we have 533 customers. And that is down from 544 in 2019, but I, I think as everyone lived through 2020, and it's put in their review mirror, we, we understand that everyone faced some hardships and a lot of unknowns and, and different things that happened in, in 2020. The collection frequency for those commercial business customers, that's, uh, that's designed to, to meet our customers' garbage and recycling needs. And we will do it multiple times per week with whatever size container is needed for that customer to meet their needs. Our industrial services for our industrial customers. We were down just about 140 halls from 2019 to 2020. And, and once again, I don't, I don't need to tell anyone that, that was alive in 2020 what happened. And that Dropbox service includes both permanent halls, which are permanent customers that always have a roll-off or Dropbox at their location, as well as temporary boxes for construction customers or residential projects. And on that next slide, if you can, Evan. Here's, here's our operations report, this is some efficiency impacts from 2020. Our commercial actually improved 3% in yards per hour with the tonnage decreased by 5.6%. And a lot of that is, that, that efficiency improvement is really with, within the city environment, you're, you're gonna see efficiency improvements when you don't, when you don't have as many stops, and, and we, we didn't have as many stops. Residential decreased by 4.2%, with a tonnage increase of 12.6%. And that was a large part due to the, the COVID impact where a lot of people were, were at home during the lockdown. And, and rather than going to work, they were at home, and, and that's where you see that tonnage increase. Our roll-off industrial decreased 3.1%, and those halls decreased by six and a half percent just in the city of Newburgh. Our volume trend for municipal solid waste, our 2019-2020 year-over-year tonnage increased by 11.4%. And our co-mingle recyclable material from 2019-2020 increased 7.72%. Some good news though, in 2020, if there, if there is, we, we actually purchased two new automated side load trucks for our residential routes. And those are replacing some, some pretty old, probably, I think they're about 25-year-old Max that, those are, those are gone now. So we've got two new trucks on, on the city streets. And those, with those comes a more efficient route, more efficient truck, and, and really, it's a safer truck. And just lastly there, our last rate adjustment that we asked for was in July 2016, when we converted from rearload over to frontload for commercial customers. And I believe the next slide, there's one of those trucks that, that's actually one of the trucks, the new trucks that we purchased that you're seeing out on the streets in the city of Newburgh. And it's, it's, you know, we, we love them, and the drivers appreciate it, and it's obviously drives down our maintenance costs, they aren't breaking down as much. They're, they're more efficient engine-wise, they're more efficient service-wise. Overall, they're, they're a much, much better truck, and it, and huge improvement over, over the two trucks they replaced. And I believe I will hand it over to Evan.
Yep. So, my name's Evan Burmester, just a refresher, I'm the area pricing manager. As part of our review, annually, we submit to the city of Newburgh a detailed cost report, which breaks down our revenues and expenses in the city of Newburgh for the year. This is a kind of summarized slide of, of, of that detailed cost report. You can kind of see the breakdown of where some of our roll-off revenue dropped off. While we did lose some commercial customers, throughout the whole year, we actually do show revenue being up by about 60,000. However, as Gary noted, some of those costs, you know, we, we did see a lot more people working from home, which drove up our tonnage quite a bit. So you can see kind of our disposal costs are up substantially. Even with the, the decrease in efficiencies, our labor costs were pretty flat during the year. Overall, we felt we did the best job we could, kind of maintaining and controlling costs. But COVID was such kind of an unprecedented year, it did have an effect on our rate of return. So you can see our operating margin, our operating rate for 2020 was 7.4%. And as part of our detailed cost report, we, we do use a CPI to project forward our costs for 2021. At the time of submitting our DCR, we hadn't really seen a lot of the effects of inflation yet. So, the CPI we were using was 1.74%. However, currently, it's getting closer to 5%, but these numbers still reflect 1.74. In order to get us to a rate of return of 10%, which is kind of the target we always shoot for, we would be requesting a 3.7% increase to rates to get us back to that 10% range. Does anyone have any questions on the detailed cost report while I'm on that slide?
Raise your hand, folks, if anybody has any, any questions. I don't know if you're gonna get to this, but I guess the, what is the impact on the standard user? I don't know if that's a coming slide.
Yeah, so the next slide, I do have kind of a comparison of, of the current rates, as well as what it would be with the 3.7% increase, as well as comparison to some surrounding cities. So, a 35-gallon cart is our most common service currently, that's $21.50 per month. With the increase, it would be going up 80 cents to 22.30. You can see how that compares to the city of McMinnville, which is 27.20, and Yamhill County is 22.82, Carlton is 22.25, and the city of Dundee is, is 21.30. A 96-gallon cart is a, is a, is another car size we offer. And you can see that would go from 29.05 to 30.12 versus some of these other comparable cities. And then in terms of a commercial rate, a two-yard container once a week is probably one of our most common services. And you can see the city of Dundee is, or the city of Newburgh, sorry, is still, is the, is the cheapest option there. A lot of these cities will have different subsidies in, in terms of, you know, who, whether commercial pays more versus residential, or whether it's equaled out. But, so you can see the rates for commercial customers is, is slightly lower than these surrounding cities. And then you can see the services included in the, in the rates as well.
Let's see, Evan, if I could, a question, so, I mean, this is, probably has to do with the transportation cost. But if, but if a 35-gallon is $22, and a 96-gallon is $30, that doesn't seem to be any, we're near a geometric increase in the tonnage? Or is it just the route that, that costs?
The difference in the rate between a 96, so it's, it's typically not, the reason why it wouldn't be necessarily more than the 30.12, it's, it's, it's really just the extra cost of, of the disposal component. The, the container does cost slightly more, but in terms of driving by the customer, it's still the, the same cost to drive by them. It's just the, the difference in the, the component rate.
That's just fascinating to me, that the disposal cost is such a small fraction, I guess, when you look at it.
Evan, Evan, can I add that also, the base service of residential service as well as yard debris is baked into all those, those different sized garbage carts? So, there's some base services that are bundled into that.
Okay, thank you.
If there aren't any other questions on the detailed cost report or this rate comparison, I believe, Gary, you're gonna discuss the food waste program?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So this is something kind of exciting, is an option that, that we'd like to, to roll out to the city of Newburgh. If, if you're interested, it's the yard debris slash or and food scraps program. So, about, I think it was March of last year, we, we did a survey, and those survey results you'd see here, 61% of our customers in the city of Newburgh that responded to that survey were interested, or very interested, or somewhat interested in a food scrap program. And an option two, that we'll get to on the next slide, the program to add food scraps would add 85 cents per customer per month. And then there's an option two B, which would add a program with a WM-provided food pail that would add $1.37 per customer per month, and that is only at the rollout of the program. And typically, those pails are sold at Home Depot, so if a customer signs on later on, they can certainly get one of those at Home Depot, or wherever you see, and you'll see those little pails, we have a picture of one down there in the lower right. And you also see kind of what, what goes into the container with this program, with the yard debris and food, food scraps. It's basically exactly what it sounds like, it's, it's all your food scraps in the kitchen, rather than sending it into, down your drain or throwing it away. We can service that with our yard debris. And if you want to go on to the next slide?
Yep. So this kind of is another rate comparison, showing the additional cost of the food scrap program if it were to be implemented on top of the, the proposed rate request we had from our annual report. So yeah, as Gary mentioned, it would only affect residential customers. It would be 85 cents per customer per month without the pail. And then if the pail were to be added, it would be an additional $1.37 per customer per month. And I know that, that can be a lot to take in in a short order, so, yeah, I mean, if anybody has any questions, or, you know, don't, don't hesitate, because I know that we, we've just kind of gone through a lot of, a lot of details, but certainly some good options there, like, like Gary was saying, to, you know, initiate the food scraps program in with the yard debris service for the city, which would be really exciting. I think, you know, like, like Gary said, you know, 61% of the people that we did the survey, you know, that completed the survey were certainly interested in that, adding that program, so.
Okay, Bryce, question?
Yes, yeah, thank you for the information. I'm curious, around the 61%, what was the, the total respondent number? And given, you know, representation, I think you said like 20% or so is from Dundee. Another small percentage Yamhill County as well, so what was the total number, and then how many of those were specifically from Newburgh?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the survey was actually just specific to the city of Newburgh residents, city of Newburgh customers. And out of that, of that 61%, well, well, I guess I should say it, the total amount of responses we got were 280. Which, you know, on these type of surveys, we, you know, you typically don't get a lot of, a lot of, you know, as, as a whole, as a percentage, it's not a lot, but it was 280 people that responded to that particular question.
Ask one quick follow-up. I'm missing, if we were to opt into, to A or B, that would automatically enroll everyone, right? Or would people have an opportunity to opt out if they didn't particularly need the food scraps?
Yeah, another good question, and you're right. The answer would be everybody, it would be a bundled service, so it would include everybody that has service. Yeah, that would be added to their service, probably.
Dave, I might add that the reason for that is the, the yard debris, which is just green waste, goes to a, a lower environmental standard processing facility. Whereas when you add food waste, then it has to go to a facility that has higher environmental standards and protocols, which is why the tip, the, that is a higher rate, and you can't mix and match those in the same truck.
Alright, other questions, folks? See, I'll dance around, see if I see any hands. Okay, I don't see any, so, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, you know, seems like when we rolled out the glass program a few years ago, there was some like online surveys that were done by a member of, of the community. And just knowing that we only had 200 returned surveys, if it might make more sense to see if we could figure out a better way to get the city involved with doing a survey. Or if there's a way that you can think of something that would help increase the, the results.
Mike, did you have a question?
Here we go, okay, so I was just wondering, you, I thought, I heard you say that if, if we did decide to do this new program, that people would have an opportunity to opt out? I mean, they're, they're not gonna be caught in it if they didn't really want to do the, the food scraps program?
No, this, no, good question, this would be, this would include everybody that has the service. So everybody, this would include everybody that, you know, has garbage recycling and the yard debris service in the city.
Yeah, the, our recycling program and the yard debris program are base programs, and those are bundled services included with your base service, which is different than the glass program, which is a subscription, so you, you can pick or choose whether you choose to have that optional service.
Alright, Stephanie?
Yeah, this might be splitting hairs just a little bit, but I'm noticing in the difference between with the pail and without the pail is about 50 cents, a little bit more each month. So I'm wondering, is that in perpetuity, because it averages out to me paying about $6 for a pail? Does that mean that will be on my bill every time, and do the pails really cost that much? I guess is my question, once you have one, can people just pay for that out of their pocket? And then have that and not have to pay the additional 50 cents a month?
Yeah, no. David, you like me to take that one?
Sure, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so, yeah, initially, those pails cost about $25 or so, and so we would probably have that rate in place for a couple of years. And because every year, we, in a sense, have to get our rates re-approved, or with the detailed cost reporting process. So if we got above, like, say, 15% on our return on revenues, we would look to do a rate reduction. And at that time, that would be coming out of that, the overall cost of the system. Does that answer your question?
It does, I have a follow-on. Has there in reality ever been a rate reduction? For something like this?
Well, that's a great question, I mean, if you look at it, you know, we haven't actually, so when you, you have some upfront costs, but yeah, maybe that cost, or that rate component offsets something else. So yeah, you, you gotta look at it as part of the program and the rollout. You know, with that also is the delivery of the cart, the, the, all the program data that goes with it. You know, a flyer is how to, to do the food waste program and things of that nature, so that's all built into that.
Alright, Elise?
I might have missed this, forgive me if I did. What is the percent or approximate percentage of cities that you're servicing in Oregon, I guess, that are opting in for this service?
Probably be a, a good question for Dean.
Sure, a great question. Back in, back in 2011 was probably the first community in Oregon, which was the city of Portland, that added food waste to their, their yard debris. Since then, we've had the city of Forest Grove, the city of Lake Oswego, the city of Milwaukee, and the city of Hillsborough that have also added food waste to their collection programs.
Alright, let's see, other questions, folks? See, alright, um, again, okay, so I guess, you know, as you see, I mean, there's a couple of us that are asking about the opt-in option. Has that ever been considered as a means to do that like you're doing with glass? And the reason I ask is that if 50% of your customers in Newburgh are recycling glass, I don't know if it could be correlated that, that food scraps might be a similar number, and that might be difficult to put on the whole population.
I'll take that question. It would be difficult to divide the city's customers in half, half of them going to this program, and half of them going to a second program. So for, for the program to be cost-effective to the whole city, the city really needs to choose one or the other. I don't think you would run, wanna run both programs, because both programs would cost, cost more than they need to, if they were all one program for the city. I wouldn't recommend that.
Also, so we've got the 50% glass recycling, how does the city of Newburgh do in its recycling broadly, in terms of Oregon rate, et cetera? Do you, do you know?
So, you know, Oregon, Oregon is, is, you know, stands out above the rest of the, the nation. I mean, the, the average is about 35, 37% nationwide, whereas Oregon is, is close to 50%. So the city of Newburgh shows well as compared to other Oregon communities with their recycling and the recycling environmental ethics, so.
Alright, councillors, other, other questions? Let's see, Mike?
So, I, I'm assuming that this is maybe a contract that the city sets up with you, is that correct? And if so, is it a year-to-year contract, or is this just basic information? And, and that's what we're doing here, just getting information?
Space management operates under a franchise agreement with the city. This is typically how all of Oregon manages their solid waste system. And it's a solid waste system, including garbage, recycling, and yard debris. And it's, it's a seven-year agreement that's renewed annually for another seven.
Then how soon, on the question of kitchen scraps, how soon do you all need to know, or do you need some kind of response from us?
Something that's really nice about this program is, and, and we could do that somewhat rapidly. I, I think the, the two-way option you see there is a pretty rapid rollout, the two-B with, with the, with the pails. Just, just based on, if, if we rolled out two-B, it would be a little longer lead time, just based on actually ordering the pails and getting them hot-stamped and getting them out, delivered to all the customers. But two-A is a rapid rollout, if, if you guys said today you wanted it done, we could have it done in a month.
Alright, and let me just make sure I understand, so the pails are just a means to keep the scraps until you get them in the bins, right? That's their function?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Alright, so you could use anything then theoretically?
Theoretically, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the pail, the pail has been proven to be a great introduction to the program, to the, to the customers. So with that pail would be the instructions, is how to use it. The pail typically goes on your kitchen counter, so it gives you a mech, or under the sink. So it's a, it's a device or a container for you to put your scraps and then bring them out, out to wherever you happen to store your, your debris cart.
Alright, thank you, any other questions, folks? Alright, well, I think, you know, Dave, as, as you're certainly familiar, we, we have a group called Sustainable Newburgh in town. And this is very much their area of interest. And whether we have spoke, I don't know if you've been in contact with them about this, but I'm sure they would love to hear more.
I, I have not been in contact, but I can, yeah, certainly be, be interested in, in doing that and, and communicating that out, Mayor, I think it'd be good.
Okay.
I know, to, just really quick, you know, part of the survey last year too, it was right, right before COVID really hit. But some of the, some of the other questions on the survey were, you know, do the, do the customers in Newburgh want weekly recycling? Because currently, it's every other week, and it was, was pretty adamant that everybody was fine with the every-of-the-week service. Which, I mean, me personally, I think, I think that's a great, great way to do it, keeps those trucks off the road, you know, one, one, one week. Same with yard debris, you know, they, we, we asked customers if they wanted the yard debris with the food, food waste on a weekly service. And the response was they'd rather it stay every other week. And the response was they'd rather it stay every other week with, with a lot of interest with the food scraps. So, yeah, I'd be more than happy to share that with anybody there listening to.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, folks? Okay.
We did kind of break down, kind of, I know we did throw a lot of information. We did kind of break it down into basically option one and option two. And then, then option two, there's a, there's the option of adding the pail or not adding the pail for the food scrap program. And then we have a kind of a final comparison of the three options in terms of their rate impact.
So I know we're in a work session now. Would you like us to come back to the council with our rate adjustment? Or would you like us to also bring the food waste option?
I'll see what the pleasure of the council is. What do you, what do you think, folks? Denise?
And we run another poll on the city's website just to find out what, how the city feels about it. And then go to Sustainable Newburgh, kind of figure that out. I'm all for the, the rate increase. I mean, we all have to, we all have to do that, but on the, go ahead, Dan.
Yes, we, we can definitely do that and happy to get something like that spun up.
Anyone else? Other questions or comments? I see, oh, go ahead. Is that Elise?
Sorry, I would support with Denise. Get that done. And then I would, on that feedback, I would personally overall support the food scraps coming before the council in the business session.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well, I, I probably don't need to remind all the folks from Waste Management, but one of the council goals is sustainability. So this certainly falls into that particular area. And again, you know, I'm all for it, but I think, I think it's very prudent what Denise said to go out, let's get a poll, get some fresh info and make sure people are well aware of what we're consider, what we're contemplating. And then they can, they can vote that way through the poll. All right, anyone else? Other questions?
Mayor, if I might, if you, one of the Daves would be willing to share the survey results with us, that would be something I think we can also post on the website just for information's sake for those who did participate. Sounded like a relatively small amount, but, you know, happy to do that as part of our rollout of another survey. And if there are folks interested in talking to the Sustainable Solutions Group, I can put you into contact with them.
Yep, that sounds great. If you, if you, again, you know, Dave, if you all wouldn't mind sharing the survey results, that'd be fantastic. We'll get that posted up. Any other comments for the good folks at Waste Management, anyone? Okay, looks, I'm not seeing.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. I do have another question, a little bit off topic, unless somebody else has any questions specific to, to this presentation. All right, I don't think I see anybody, but okay. So City Manager Weinheimer and I met, oh, I don't know, Dan, what, a couple of weeks ago now, probably, with the principals for a company called Ridwell. That is, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they do recycling of more difficult to, to recycle products. And just wanted to get your folks' thoughts on a company like Ridwell.
Yeah, I'll love to talk to you about that. You know, in Oregon, solid waste is defined and it includes all these materials. And under that agreement, our franchise covers a collection of these materials. Waste Management is happy to talk to you about expanding our recycling materials list if that's of interest to, to the council. Just like tonight, we discussed about expanding the yard debris to including food waste. We have a great program where we would collect five items, textiles, styrofoam, plastic film, what else is there? Batteries and, and fluorescent bulbs. And that would be done on an on-call. So just like if you had a bulky waste item, you call Waste Management. We schedule a pickup and we send a truck out and we pick those up and we charge you an extra charge for that one event, that one collection event. So if the city's interested in that, that's another program we'd love to present to you. Yeah.
I personally, I'd love to know more about it. I think it would be great. Just after the, just anecdotally, after our little Ridwell talk, I decided to save all the styrofoam, all the plastic and all the, and I've got a couple of bags now in a very short amount of time. And there's only two of us in the house. So there you go. Anyway, so I personally, I don't know, Council, if you can give me a thumbs up, thumbs down, and whether you'd like to know some more about other products. Looks like I'm getting thumbs up all around. So that would be, that would be fantastic. We could learn more.
Sure. You know, Waste Management's your solid waste service provider and we're happy to provide those expanded services if the community's interested. We like to shape our programs based on the community's wishes and, you know, we're open to that.
Okay, and maybe we could include, I don't know, Dan, if that would be too much, but we can include something like that in the survey as well if we're going to do something.
Sure.
Awesome. All right, well, great. Let's see. So I think if I got everybody, Dave, Gary, Evan, Mike and Dean, I think. I don't know if I got everybody. Thank you all so very much. And we'll wait to hear, we'll wait to hear more of that. All right, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks. Onto our next item. This is a presentation on the non-coattable water system. City Engineer Karen Hoffman, please.
Good evening, Council Mayor. So I'm here to talk to the council about the non-coattable water system. It's been a little while since you have gotten an update on this. And so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we were doing with non-coattable water and what it consists of. Next slide, please. So the non-coattable water system reduces the demand for potable water by large irrigation users and/or manufacturing users. They can use this water to supplement the potable water system. It allows for a reduction in the effluent discharge to the Willamette River also. And our non-coattable system consists of two water sources. It consists of Otis Springs, that you can kind of see in the northeast section of the city. And then also the recycled water from the water treatment plant, or the wastewater treatment plant. The map you're looking at now is the irrigation demand map that we developed when we did our water master plan in 2017. So we looked at the higher, highest irrigation users and where it made sense to, to utilize the non-coattable water. Also on this map, you see existing purple pipe. There's places where we have some and places where we don't have some at, at this point. Next slide, please. So our, our recycled water system is, was constructed in 2008, 2009. The system produces what's called Class A recycled water, and that's defined by Oregon Administrative Rules. We can currently produce 1 million gallons a day. It can be expanded to 2 million gallons a day. Right now, the only permitted user is at the golf course. And then if, if we, if anybody was to use the recycled water, there's a bunch of regulations. One of them is required notification at the location with signs. So you'll see at the golf course, there are signs that indicate that they are using recycled water. And if other users were using it, they would be required to post those signs also. Next slide, please. So Otis Springs is our other source. We use this as a secondary water source in, until the 1980s. We do have a water right of 2.58 million gallons a day. And right now it produces 3.3 to 0.5 million gallons per day. And we don't do any treatment for this water. And we have a little bit of onsite storage. And right now the piping is extended to the golf course or was extended in 2007. Next slide, please. So the non-coattable water system plan that was adopted by the council in 2016 indicates that we would expand the waters, the non-coattable system to the north using the Otis Springs as the source for that. That was the shortest and smallest capital cost to increase that usage. And then the other pieces of the puzzle, which would be as the urban renewal district or the mill site redeveloped, we could extend the reuse, the recycled water that direction. And then eventually, as, as the usage became more, we could combine those two lines and, or to the north and the south to make it one whole system. What you'll see is, on this screen is also the cost for expansions of those systems, of this option, I mean. And it's about three and a half million dollars in order to do that. And it, like I said, it does allow for further expansion into the riverfront area. Next slide, please. So other information along with this, the non-coattable, we have been in discussion with several industrial users. The Providence Medical Plaza, that was just constructed to connect the non-coattable water system. We've also been in conversations with the hospital about them using the non-coattable for their cooling system. The adopted spring master plan does require the use of non-coattable water in their parks and open space when that master plan develops. Agricultural users outside the city has requested the use of our non-coattable system. We don't have that pipe available to them. And we also have regulations in our municipal code that does not allow us to serve users outside the city. Purple pipe is being installed in the Crestview Crossing project and in East Crestview Drive as we speak. And there are SDCs that have been designated for the non-coattable system. Right now, all of the, the city, other city users subsidizes any expansion of the non-coattable water system because we have no users. We currently have one user on the system and that is the golf course. And they use about 0.6 million gallons a day at their max. Next slide, please. Other things we've talked about in the past that have yet to be accomplished was revising the municipal code to require the use of the non-coattable system if it was available for irrigation and industrial users, for new users. We had talked about that when we did the adoption in 2016, but was never given direction to actually move forward with that. So there's no requirement for anybody to use the non-coattable system. If we were to require the use of it, it could be a loss of revenue of up to $275,000 a year. That's an estimate, you know, it, it depends really on how much is used throughout the year. We could also revise the municipal code to allow for agricultural uses outside the city limits to use the non-coattable system. And then we are in the process of doing capital improvements to Otis Springs to, to further the expansion to the north of the non-coattable system. So that's the information that I wanted to present to the city and, to the council and get feedback, comments, questions. I know that it has come up in the past, questions on the non-coattable system.
All right, folks, so questions? Mike?
So if we wanted to sell this water to, let's say, the, the farmers outside, how do we, we would have to change the code, but then would, would they just come with their tankers? And I guess we wouldn't worry about how they're going to do that. But as, how, how, how much inquiry have you had from them? Are they really interested? Is there enough to, to make it worthwhile to do?
We've had a couple of different farms that have made the request. Most of them along the Lammit, Lammet, along Wilsonville Road, sorry, it's a W, Wilsonville Road. And there is purple pipe in that direction. So it wouldn't take a, a whole lot in order to have the system be available for that. But, and then Doug can speak, we've had other folks on the south of 219 that have also made that request. So there would be some infrastructure that would be required to be installed in order to make that occur. But again, we would have to, the first piece would be to change the municipal code to allow it to occur. And then we would probably take it to the rate review committee in the fall to, to set a rate for, for those, those folks to utilize that water and then, and then look at the infrastructure in order to make it happen.
Other questions, comments, folks? All right, let's see, let's see. So is, I guess, and maybe this is for Doug or either way, but is purple pipe to the mill site currently a project in the urban renewal list?
No, it is not. Because to go from the wastewater treatment plant, you would have to get into the urban renewal district boundary first. And so there's a distance you would have to go to. So the committee was on a list. It was considered. In the end, they did not identify that as a project.
So, so then if it wasn't an urban renewal, we'd have to pay for it through another capital improvement project? Is that how it would do, go?
Correct.
Is it included in any SDC calculations now?
It is not at this stage in the game.
Okay. Okay, other questions, folks? I know the subject of non-coattable rates being charged to the golf course has been a subject of discussion over the years, shall we say? And I'm, I'm sure Citizens Rate Review will, will likely hear about it again. Have, has any additional thought been given to that? Or we're still on the notion of trying to find additional users?
We're still on the notion of trying to find additional users. And we do look at it every two years at the system rate review. In fact, the last round, we, we actually sent all of our numbers out to a, a third party to review to make sure that we weren't, you know, double counting something or double dipping or something. When we made the recommendation for what the rate should be and they agreed with all of our numbers. And so that's where it sits today.
Thank you. Other questions? Mike, go ahead.
So when you talk about the non-coattable, are you talking about primarily Otis Springs? Or are you also talking about the, the reused water that the golf course is using? Or are you talking about both?
We talk about both when they say that.
All right.
Because the golf course actually uses the Otis Springs water during a certain portion of the year until it gets really hot and then they start to use the, the recycled water.
Okay.
All right, other, other questions, folks? Okay, see, and I think, you know, Karen, you're going to look in for a little direction, I think, from the council. So I guess one of the questions is, is it, would we like to look into a municipal code change to allow the provision of potable wa, non-coattable water outside of city limits? Maybe just, we can't make a decision, but maybe a yay, thumbs up, something like that to give a little bit of direction? Anybody? I got, I got three. Looks like I got, yeah, looks like everybody. Okay, so that one looks like we'd like to hear about. What, what else, Karen? What else would you would like to hear from us?
The other question was, at one point we had talked about requiring new users, if they were irrigation and/or industrial, requiring them to use it, the system. And we have not, again, forced that issue, but it's, it's a question for the group if we wanted to.
All right, folks, thoughts on, on requiring the use of non-coattable if it is available? No, go ahead, Mike.
You're muted, Mike.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm okay with that to require it. I just would want to take a look at what, what are we going to be charging? So, I mean, that would be my only concern. So, I mean, that would be my only concern. You gotta make it, uh, I think, really cost effective in order to be uh used and and after all, I think that's what we wanna do. It'd be better to use it than dump it into the in the river.
Yeah, right, right now, the cost to use non potable water is about a quarter of the cost of irrigation water.
Uh, go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested in that conversation, cause I think what we're looking at in drought conditions, I don't think we're looking at it getting better. And I certainly think it wouldn't hurt us to get ahead of the game if if things are looking long term, like water is gonna be a real issue. Um, it it behooves us to have that conversation now rather than down the road when it's sort of an emergency. Um, even if it it's feeling a little bit like an emergency right now. So I I would like to have some more discussion about that.
Right, right, uh, Bryce, I thought I saw.
Yep, uh. Simply put, that friend speaks my mind, absolutely. Uh, one of my other close friends who's a hydrogeologist firmly believes World War Three is gonna be over potable water. Um, seeing some head nods, so I absolutely, we wanna get ahead of this.
Uh, let's see, anyone else? Okay, yep, I agree completely. I think it's something that we need to really look into. Um, and you know, again, you know, as Mike said, he brought up a good point, is the cost, the rate does drive it, but if it's a quarter of what the regular water that we can drink is, again, hopefully that's an advantage to any industrial irrig- or irrigation user. In addition, oh, so let's get a thumbs up on that if we wanna pursue that idea, at least look into it. Looks like you got it all the way around. Um, the other, I'd I'd like to, I'd like to propose that we do look into making sure that we've got this non potable water to the industrial to this, to the mill site. Um, I hope that's where potentially the largest industrial users we may have may well be there, so. Um, I'd love to make sure that we've got that somehow included, or at least get an idea of what it might cost to to extend it to there. Alright, anything else, folks? Alright.
Actually, I'll I'll bring up one more thing for the council, just to be aware, is on the recycled piece, we can expand it to um, two million gallons a day. Um, and that's about the limit of our current, um that's the amount of effluent that we actually would um send to the river, um, if we weren't using recycled water. So that's about the limit based on what we do today in the summertime. Um, obviously, we have more in the wintertime, um, because we have more water that ends up at the plant. But just something to keep in mind, there is a limit to to what we can pro- produce and provide, so.
Is there additional cost, Karen, to go from the one million to two million, or is that just, it is, okay?
Yeah, right now, um, it was, the original setup was to allow for two million, but we've only got a treatment train for one million. So we would have to um add in additional filters and those types of things in order to to provide the two million.
Alright, great. Um. Alright, anything else, folks? Alright, well, sounds good. And and maybe that's something that we, if we don't have it already, it might be nice to get a ballpark idea of that, too, if it had to be expanded. Just, you know, again, like we say, we um, everybody's mentioning drought and World War Three and whatnot, and um, yeah, so. Um, otherwise, it's exciting to hear purple pipe being talked about. It's good stuff, you know, keep it out of the river if we can, so that's good, so.
I do have a quick question. Why do they have, why do they have to put this sign up? I drank that water on a dare, cause I'm a twelve year old boy. Um, but why do they have to put a sign up?
Uh, you know, right now is, that's requirements from DEQ and the Oregon Administrative Rules. I think it's, it's just to make sure people understand and know that that it's there. Um, I I agree with you, Denise, there are a lot of other places all over the world, um, even in the US that are drinking uh recycled water. Um, and um, I I think part of it is a perception issue in in the Northwest. We we think we have so much water and that we don't need to be looking at these other options. Um, and I think, you know, as we've talked about with redundant water supply and those kinds of things, I think we do need to be looking at all of the options that are available to us and being able to utilize them where we can.
Awesome. Alright, Bryce, did you have a comment?
Yeah, uh, A, Denise, that water sometimes real stinky. That that, that's what those signs. Um, my real question, you've talked about filters that be required to increase from one million to two million. Um, the, are those costs covered? Well, not covered, but would those come out of SDCs as well?
Um, yeah, tho- those would be covered by SDC, not by non potable SDCs.
By non potable SDCs.
Again, so we we uh, as part of our SDC, we have a potable water SDC and a non potable water SDC. So
Okay.
Um, right now, because we don't have anybody coming on to the non potable, um, all of the citizens of Newburgh are subsidizing any of those projects that we are doing.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no, that that's helpful, especially as I know the SDC's conversations are are coming, so it's helpful to keep in mind. Thank you.
And then, uh, hopefully then, if we're gonna lose two hundred and seventy five thousand projected in revenue, that we can make that up by selling water to people outside the city. There we go. Let's hope, let's hope. Uh, or let's market, I guess, anyway, but alright, um. I I could just imagine the taglines that we could try to use, you know, uh, but I won't go in there, I won't go there. Alright, anything else, folks? Alright, well, I think I got, uh, just before, why don't we reconve- let's give us a, give ourselves a couple of minutes. Let's go to seven ten for the start of the business session, if that works for everybody. Um, and for anyone who might be waiting, my apologies, we'll be back at seven ten. Mute yourself, stop your video, but don't sign out. Thanks very much. Alright, good evening, everyone. That looks like seven ten by my watch. Uh, this is the city council business session for July sixth, twenty twenty one. Uh, there's also an agenda in Spanish at the city's website. Uh, if we could call the meeting to order and begin with a roll call, please, Sue. You are muted, my friend. Sue, I think you're still muted, sorry.
Sorry, one laptop died and it was, anyway, you know, technical ju- juggling. Okay, um, Councilor McBride.
Here.
Councilor Kofio.
Here.
Councilor Yarnell Holloman.
Here.
Councilor, or Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Councilor Bacon.
Here.
Councilor Finley.
Here.
And for the record, um, Councilor Martinez Plankarte is absent this evening.
The the prejudicial allegiance, please.
Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Um, before we get into sort of more pleasant things, I see we've got our good friends from the Old Fashioned Festival on the line. Um, so good evening all. But before we do that, um, I'd I'd like to mention, I know, uh, Councilor Yarnell Holloman mentioned this as well. You know, unfortunately, last week, we, you may have heard, um, we lost a farm worker in St. Paul who succumbed to heat illness. Uh, Sebastian Francisco Perez was a farm worker who had just arrived in the US in May. Um, and he left a wife in Guatemala. So I'd like to uh just read a draft letter that uh City Manager Weinheimer and I put together uh that we hope to send to our uh state representative and senator, so if you'll indulge me for a second. So, uh, dear Senator Thatcher, the heat-related death of farm worker Sebastian Francisco Perez last week in neighboring St. Paul came to us as a shock to us all. In our agriculture-heavy part of the Willamette Valley, we know how important farms and therefore farm workers are to our economic prosperity, to our sustenance, and to the natural beauty and abundance of our region. The recent heat wave was unprecedented, but unfortunately may not be a one-time incident. Many experts warn that extreme heat events could be a common occurrence in future years. We urge you to support the completion of Orosa rules that will protect both our farms and our farm workers. As you may know, the rules were to have been finalized by the end of June twenty twenty one, but now have now been pushed out to September twenty twenty one. The fall may be too late. Our farms, our farm workers and our communities should not have to experience another tragic but preventable death. Thank you for our service, your service to our community. Um, so, and again, uh, the unfortunate passing of Sebastian Francisco Perez. Alright, um, with that, let's move on to presentations and a bit lighter subjects. So, the proclamation of Newburgh Old Fashioned Festival Week. Um, and so, Richard, I don't know if you'd like to give us some introductory words before we get to the proclamation itself.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you, Rick Jones, and and members, appreciate the uh, the introduction. Um, I'm excited to be a part of the NOF organization. I'd like to quickly introduce the court, if I may. I have uh Queen Macy here. We have Princess Lily Green and as well, CNI eight having, um, Princess CNI eight having issues with her a video, but she's definitely listening in to audio. We are very excited to um be able to give the community a condensed version of the festival. Um, with law planning went through this last season and um we really had to navigate through a lot of um, regulations uh with the OHA as well as what the government was stating. So, we're very excited to present what we will be having, as well as to be able to like give the community a very nice firework display this year. And um, it's gonna be bigger and we've uh been told that it's gonna be visible from a lot of areas from around the city, so we're very excited about that.
Alright, well, thank you. And I see also, we have our good friends, uh, Brian and Missy Love on the call as well, so good evening, guys. Good evening, and thank you all for all that you do. And to the court, thank you so much, congratulations. And uh, this is very, it's very fun, and you know, Richard and your group, the fact that you could put together, you know, a festival with not knowing up until relatively recently what was gonna happen, um, is quite incredible. I know I spoke with Brian not long ago, and the notion is you can't just put a festival together overnight. It doesn't work like that. So thank you, thank you all so, so very much. So if you will indulge me, I I will read the the proclamation. So, a proclamation declaring July twenty fourth through twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one, as Newburgh Old Fashioned Festival Week. Whereas the city of Newburgh is a family-friendly and inclusive community that hosts many gatherings, numerous celebrations, and a variety of entertainment venues where old friends and new ones can get together. And whereas each year, the city of Newburgh and many members of the community participate by celebrating community spirit during the last full weekend in July. And whereas, due to COVID nineteen, the COVID nineteen pandemic, many events just like Newburgh Old Fashioned Festival were canceled to protect the community and help stop the spread of the virus. Fortunately, this year, there had, will be an abbreviated form of the festival taking place July twenty fourth through twenty five, two thousand twenty one, to bring the community together. And whereas, with various fun and enjoyable entertainment like the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, Newburgh Classic Fire Apparatus Show, Hymn Sing Firework Show, and a five K run and walk presented by Shaillen Parks and Recreation. And whereas, marking the twenty twenty one as the fortieth anniversary year of the festival, a special time to be involved in this event, and now therefore it is proclaimed by the mayor and city council on behalf of the people of the city of Newburgh, Oregon, that we proclaim July twenty four and twenty five, two thousand twenty one, as Newburgh Old Fashioned Festival Week. So, thank you all so very much. Thank you, right? Thank you for all of your work to get this done. Um, and we will, you know, I think, uh, as we can with the city, we'll make sure everybody asks all the time, so what's happening with Old Fashioned Festival? You've got the list of events right here now, and we will try to get that out and make sure that, uh, you know, all of the residents of our community, uh, know and are are there to participate and and to celebrate the court and all the work that you guys have done, so, so thank you so very much. Alright, and we'll see you at the Old Fashioned Festival. Alright, we'll see you there.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, guys. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Alright. Alright, uh, let's see, moving on, we're now at the city manager's report and the city attorney's quarterly report.
I'll jump in uh and maybe take the lead on this one. I've got a few items. Um, one, just wanted to note, um, the survey and and to at least a phase of COVID, maybe not the end of COVID, but uh, and and to uh face covering requirements and some of the physical distancing that we, uh, as an employer and as a, as a host to, uh, I think at the library and other other uh public spaces, uh, we had to comply with. Uh, we received notice on the first of July that uh we could remove some of the restrictions on our employees and visitors, and so we have done that. Um, still wanna encourage and we try to promote uh opportunities for folks to receive vaccinations in the community and uh continue to to take action against COVID. Uh, obviously, you know, looking at the news, there are still COVID out there and there's still an ongoing um, uh, from OHA and uh and those kinds of uh state level and and the the county public health folks, that there is still an ongoing uh caseload in Yamhill County and in other parts of the the state as well. But uh, celebrate the fact that you don't have to wear a mask in uh, in buildings, I suppose. And so just wanna note that for folks uh who are looking to to come visit us. Um, second, uh, we already spoke to the heat events, um, you know, obviously, three days in a row of uh all-time record heat. Pretty crazy, uh, especially in context, me at least, of being in the state for a relatively short period of time and having experienced a forty or fifty year ice storm uh on the heels of now uh some, some pretty crazy uh heat. Um, and I I think, uh, just wanna note that we had a lot of staff who were helping. Uh, we provided uh at least four cooling center locations that I'm aware of and wanna thank the folks around the county for uh kind of nudging us a little bit, but also helping us in in resourcing some of those, making sure we had water for those and um, making sure we could get folks off the street and into a cooler space. Um, and wanna just acknowledge the community partners uh for opening their spaces and for working with us and um, on behalf of the community. But specifically, uh, you know, the members of the police department for being out and about in the heat uh in dark-colored vehicles and heavy equipment and all the stuff. God bless them, I suppose, but um, you know, I'm happy that we uh did not have any incidents there, but uh, uh, just I appreciate that they were directing people to cooling centers as well. And then, uh, Karen Tarmichael in uh Public Works was super helpful to me in trying to get those cooling center locations um, as well as Will Worthy and his staff, the library. And then, uh, Leo French-Pinzon and Vance Barton in going over to the uh emergency shelter and making sure that they had air conditioning, uh, which was not a thing. And uh, so uh, they were able to go uh on that Friday, get those air conditioning units set up and running. So hopefully, they provided some relief to folks. Um, we'll have an after action that we're we're looking into uh steps and and sort of what did we learn? And and how do we maybe get some information out quicker and we're, you know, a little bit more on the ball, I think, as far as when we see an event like this coming, if if we do, um, and what we can do to prepare. So we'll work internally on some of those things. Um, the next item sort of related to the heat was uh kind of a bummer, I know. Uh, we had a Friday meeting and um, you know, announced a a restriction on the use of fireworks in Newburgh. And uh, you know, we're able to get that information out pretty widely, I think, but not universally throughout the uh, the city and the community, and and certainly that only affected Newburgh. It did not affect Dundee and neighborhood communities, but um, and I know there were some questions about that, but um, you know, just wanted to, I have not gotten the full synopsis of uh, calls for service from uh TVFNR, but I'm I'm told that there was no big fire, so that's something. Uh, especially since I think that they were very concerned about the possibility of a of fire and the the dry conditions we have. Um, from the police department, um, the number of calls for service actually went up this year as compared to previous years. And I think that's because there was a ban and folks know, knew that they could call on uh folks who were lighting off fireworks. And they did. Um, so we got about fifty-four on the fourth, fifty-four phone calls, um, about fireworks. Six uh in the days leading up, so that's sixty total. In previous years, on the fourth, uh, twenty twenty, we had forty-one and twenty nineteen thirty-five. So, uh, we're seeing an increase in overall in calls, but um in all, uh, we really focused, or the police department focused on uh kind of trying to provide information to folks. Uh, many of the the individuals contacted when they could find who was lighting off the firework, uh, which was actually a pretty uncommon thing. Not maybe that surprising, but they had four warnings issued, um, and as well, forty-two unable to locate. So, um, obviously, uh, an attempt was made, and not always as easy to find somebody uh shooting off fireworks in the dark. Uh, but again, no fires, so hopefully, uh, you know, some some good enforcement, and I think, uh, as was discussed at the council meeting, we can kind of lean in on trying to improve that process in the future. But again, no fires. So hopefully, you know, some, some good enforcement. And I think as was discussed, the council meeting, we can kind of lean in on trying to improve that process in the future. One, well, maybe two good news items. One good news item is working with the Newburgh Downtown Coalition and Polly Peterson on a, what I think is going to be an exciting program for the city, which is a downtown gift card. So the idea of being a closed loop Visa card system and something that you could essentially opt in as a business and then, you know, folks could spend the money. And, you know, you gift it to someone, you spend the money in, in Newburgh. And so it stays in our, in our system. And, you know, I think we're looking at trying to kick that off with a pilot for the first couple of years with the city's support. The city's financial support, I should say. And so the first year would be about $10,000 and year two, I think Polly's estimating about $7,500. And my plan is to use the ARPA funding that we were provided, a portion of that, a small portion of that to kick that program off. So just fair warning. And hopefully the goal is actually to, to get that up and running by the time George Fox is back on campus. And that way we can provide those gift cards to students and their families when they come in. So fingers crossed, we're going to try and move quickly on that. And the last item is we interviewed four candidates for police chief. And, you know, I think we'll have a press release out. So this is breaking news maybe for folks. I appointed Jeff Cosmic to be the, the chief of police, take away the interim title. And pleased with that selection. And, you know, I think he performed well in the process that we had. And, you know, I was telling him, you know, I learned a lot from the process in the sense of, you know, what other candidates and other communities offer, you know, learning from, from other, other people. And, you know, one of the, the things that he and I talked about is also just the ongoing commitment to citizen participation and really trying to engage folks in the community and all parts of the community. Really building our leadership bench and, you know, thinking about succession planning now. So not that I'm trying to move on from Jeff, but, you know, just as he gets the chair, we start thinking about the next person. But doing that in a thoughtful way so that we're really preparing the, the staff for the type of department and the type of activities and leadership that we want to see long term. And I think we've been doing that. That's not to say we haven't. That's just to be super intentional about it. And I think informing that from the public opinion and some of the, the comments that we received in the process, you know, I think hopefully folks recognize the opportunity of providing input to the police chief process and to the police department is is an opportunity for them to hear and incorporate some of that and for me frankly, to hear that incorporated. And so it's an opportunity for all of us to learn and to advance the culture of the department and the city as a whole. And he and I have committed to working collaboratively. And so hoping that that's a long and fruitful partnership, but also just trying to, to think about how we can advance, you know, under one umbrella, one, one city. One, you know, cohesive city department and, and, you know, just really work together going forward. So I'm excited about it. I hope Jeff is excited about it. And, you know, I think hopefully the, the community will see some really good steps forward as, as Jeff really takes the reins and makes it his own department. So that is what I have for you and I will hand it off to James unless there are questions.
All right, questions? Anyone for Dan?
I would just like to say congratulations, Jeff, since he's on the attendee side.
There it is. Bryce, did you have a question?
Yes. Yeah. Thank you. Gosh, so many good things to follow up on. This might be getting too much into the weeds. It is interesting. It's interesting, not surprising that there's an increase of calls after the ban. I'm curious though, if there is, if we would be able to know what the nature of those calls were, meaning was it just fireworks in general or are we seeing an increase of folks setting up like mortars and, and the ones that were already illegal? That would be interesting to, to know. It's also good to hear that there aren't any big fires. I'm curious. So if there were smaller ones, I think the previous time when we spoke with the chief of the fire department had mentioned there being previous data around how many small fires needed to be put out. So it'd be good to know if there was a decrease in those, even though there weren't any big ones. And then the last thing that I have here is it'd be good to get feedback across the board, both from the community as well as from the police department. I know in particular Rick and Denise were concerned about enforcement. And so it would be good to, to get feedback, still to hear from folks that work in the city. What that process was like, as well as what we might want to consider for next year. Cause then our Rick had put out a desire to potentially look towards the ban next year. So I think being able to get that feedback after we move forward would, would be good. All right. I'll stop time now.
Thank you. Probably punt on most of those, but the one thing I will say from a feedback standpoint is, I think a little more notice would be beneficial to make sure we get, have time to get the word out. But we knew that, you know, honestly, I think talking about it on the Friday before we knew it would be hard to get the information.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, folks, before we move on to James? You know, I too will echo Denise's congratulations to, to the chief, you know, congratulations, Chief Cosmic, well deserved. So. All right. All right, James, we are ready for the quarter two, 2021 update.
Great, great. Thank you, Mayor Rogers, and thanks to the council for, for your time. I did put together a few slides as I've shared during the Q1 update. This is the next and kind of quarterly updates that I plan to provide on matters that, that we've been working on during the second quarter. Intended to provide a brief, high level summary on matters worked on, but also to, to provide an outlook on items that we see coming in the upcoming quarter, or at least on the back half of, of this year. This is a very high level summary. So if there are questions about specific items or matters, happy to discuss those further, but like to just give a bit of a, bit of a flavor of what we're working on in the city attorney's office. Next slide, please. So as an overview, we had 33 new matters come in during the second quarter of 2021. That is a bit lower than the first quarter of 2021, which is expected to, to a great degree. We knew that there was some backlog and continues to be a bit of backlog coming as a result of the transition from, from in-house counsel to, to outside counsel. But we did see, did see 33 new matters come across our desk. 23 matters are currently ongoing and active. Those 23, you know, consistent part of, of new matters that just arrived in the second quarter, but then there are also some larger scopes, larger lead items that have come up during the first quarter. And then during Q2, we, we were able to complete 25 matters. This, this list does not refer to active litigation. Of course, this goes without saying, but I'll, I'll still share it again that with the council that any sort of active litigation that we would discuss, we would discuss an executive session. So this excludes active litigation. Next slide, please. So on the next few slides, I just kind of selected a few departments within the city and just highlighted a few items that we've, we've performed substantial amounts of work on or completed during Q2. I won't necessarily walk through the entire list for each of these departments, but did just want to highlight a few just to again, add some flavor in, in looking at, you know, Public Works in particular, we did, as the council knows, from the approval at the June 21st meeting, reach an agreement with ASME that will run through June 30th of 2024. I want to give a lot of kudos and credit to Kesia Warner. And I want to give a lot of credit to Russ Thomas for, for leading efforts for the negotiation team for the city. My colleagues assisted, but Kesia and Russ were just outstanding during the entire process. And it is not a small lift to work through those negotiations. So much, much credit to, to them and, and the kind of finalizing and putting the ball in the documentation is, is coming up here. But we're delighted to reach an agreement in, in Q2. Next slide, please. So as you, as you know, from conversations with, with Doug Rucks, there's a lot going on in the community development. You know, I won't kind of steal that thunder or go through all the items that are going on. I think that some of the large items that are occurring is one, you know, we're, we're still kind of continuing the process, if you will, of, of making the appropriate updates to the code. You probably recall from May that we added a new article for, you know, vertical housing development in connection with the HB 2001. I think it is safe to say that will not be the last update to the development code that is coming as a result of all that is, that is going on in the space. What's not on this list because it's, it's not complete. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to cheat necessarily is that there, we're also working with Doug and his team on urban renewal efforts in terms of getting the urban renewal agency up and going and coordinating or contributing to the coordination efforts with, with the county and other bodies in connection with urban renewal. Next slide, please. Finance. So as the council already knows, for the, for the past several months, the city's had a contract with Marina and Co. Led by, by Rob Moody over at Marina, who was excellent. One of the items that we worked on with Rob and, and also with Dan and others at the city, with city staff is development of a procurement policy. I guess I said I wasn't going to cheat, but I am cheating a little bit because the procurement policy is, is still under development, but we did make some, we do have an updated draft, if you will, of that procurement policy. The, the kind of the first cut was, was prepared by Marina. We made some, some updates with input from, from Dan and others. And we also, you know, made several updates in compliance with some of the latest revisions to Oregon's public contracting code. The one item that I'll point out, I guess skipping ahead to, to one of my future slides is that when it comes to procurement, we are going to be coming to the council to look for not only feedback on the procurement policy with respect to, you know, contracting thresholds and whatnot, but a couple of new items that the council may be interested in is introducing certain ideas with respect to preference for, for local companies and preferences or focuses on MWESB firms, minority women in emerging small businesses. You know, cities vary kind of in the approach that they take in those two particular spaces. But that's a conversation that we, that we want to have with council this, this summer is that will guide our efforts in, in finalizing that procurement policy. Next slide, please. And public safety. So several, several things going on. I will point out that probably one of the most recent developments since, as Dan already pointed out, some of the mask wearing, we're reaching a bit of a milestone, if you will, as far as the pivot away from mask wearing. But we did work on the intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for law enforcement services. So you provided law enforcement services to the St. Paul rodeo. I would like to express my, my congratulations, but also my sincere thanks to Chief Cosmic. As he was, he was a great help as well as Captain Ferguson, Captain Cameron Ferguson. As they were a great help as we worked on the advancement and finalization of that IGA. As a relatively new city attorney for Newburgh, it's, I have a, I had a lot of questions for them and a lot of inquiries and, and we worked through the details and I just can't give enough thanks to Chief Cosmic and Captain Ferguson on, on, on that front. Next slide, please. A couple of items that are, that are kind of in the queue here that are coming in, in Q3. You know, we've, we've talked about the, the procurement policy piece. There, there are kind of three components to some of the updates that are going on in that space, right? There's the actual procurement policy, but then there's solicitation documents, invitations to bin, whatnot, that, that are, that the city uses to bring in vendors to perform services to address the city's needs. We've we are in the midst of several marathon sessions as, as some staff can, can smile, smile about several marathon sessions to update those solicitation documents. We also have revised the, a number of contract forms. As you may recall from Q1, we've already updated the form for, for professional services, but for construction services, that's a separate contract that we've been working to, to update for the city. And the, the vision with respect to updating all of these templates and forms is that once we get to a, a document and a risk profile that works for the city attorney's office, conceptually, when we have vendors that come in in our awarded work, if those vendors are not making kind of attempting to make overhauls to the document or extensive changes to the agreement, it should create a very streamlined process where legal doesn't have to touch each contract that, that comes into the door. So those forms will, will help with that a great deal. And that's something that we're looking to, to wrap up in, in Q3 of this year. I touched on urban renewal, our work there and efforts there are, are ongoing. I cannot guarantee that those will end in Q3. I can't see a picture of Doug, but I think that, I suspect that he would, he would agree that that's going to go well beyond Q3. But, but we are, our efforts are continuing there. We've heard the council's interest in some additional discussions and training on, on public meetings and on council rules. And those are discussions that we intend to take a leadership role in, in, in conducting for the council and also any sort of updates that need to be made to the council rules will be, will be working on those. And then also we know that the TLT, similar to the SDC conversation that's coming, as Counselor Colefield pointed out, that there's a TLT conversation as well that, that is on the horizon. We've been fielding a number of inquiries about that already, but we'll, we'll look to issue some more formal guidance here coming up in, in Q3. So I'll stop there as far as quarter two is concerned, but happy to, to answer any questions or discuss any other matters further.
All right, folks, questions? At least.
No, this isn't a question, but I just, I have to say this. It has been so refreshing to have James on board and just the amount of work and professional level of professionalism that you have, that you've given to the council. I feel like we've totally, we, we're so lucky to have you. So thank you for all of the work you're doing. And I know, I'm sure Cosmic feels the same about you.
Well, I, I appreciate that, Councilor Yarnell Hallman. It's, I'm, I'm just delighted to, to be working with the city. It's, it's really, I mean, I just really enjoy working with this, this council, the staff. It's, it's, it's a real pleasure. I know we're only six months in, but, but I, I think that you know, I, I just enjoy working with this group and I think we're, we're off to a good start.
All right. And so the, the question from the, from the other side, if we're playing good cop, bad cop, I'll ask, how are we doing with the budget? How are we doing with the money we're expending for, for your fine services?
I probably should take that one. And, and I guess I would say that we're on track. As noted, the use is tapering a slight bit. Slight bit. I think we estimated high, we hope. And, you know, I think we're, you know, we're having conversations about cost containment and, and doing that through things like was mentioned, you know, forms and, and some of the processes. But it's also learning both the issues for Miller and Nash and staff, but it's also trying to figure out, you know, for, for us, for staff, like what are the, what are the thresholds? What needs to go to attorneys? What doesn't, you know, and figuring out some of, you know, our processes. So we're working on it all. So we're on track.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for James? All right. Well, thank you, James. Thank you very much. Dan, thank you for your report as well. All right. Next, we've got item 6A on your agenda. And this is a fun one. So Sue, do you want to introduce this item?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is a fulfillment of a policy you passed earlier this year to add student commissioners to each and every one of the to add student commissioners to each and every one of the cities committees. So I'm just gonna, Rick, if it's okay, I'll briefly read their names. Sorry, I was over fiddling with my other computer. So we have did interviews on the 23rd and 24th. And so we have Aiden Gray for Planning Commission, Alexander Acular for Citizens Rate Review, Joyce Del Rosario for Affordable Housing, Liam Deacon for Historic Preservation, and Claire Faucher for the Library Advisory Board. And then the mayor, Zaira, and I have met, and we discussed going ahead and appointing Lee Vice Troop and Thomas Ropola as alternates because we will have more ad hoc committees coming on board this fall.
Well, thank you, Sue. And just a little more background. So this is for a period to serve from September 1st, 2021 to May 31st, 2022. As Sue mentioned, that means we will have a student commissioner on every one of the standing committees, which is super exciting. I think it's great. We had 13 applicants, interviewed seven candidates. And so just the the interest that was shown by the students is fantastic. I mentioned this to Doug, but it was refreshing to hear and actually, well, anyway, refreshing to hear that a couple of these students had participated in the Design Star program in middle school and now have gotten into high school or beyond and want to continue their involvement. So that is absolutely fantastic. And as actually, I sent a note to Jessica Pells about this, and she was the founder of the of this program, as far as I understand, and she as well was delighted. So, you know, congratulations to all of those students and thank you. Thank you as well, Sue, to Sue, to Zaira, thank you to Denise and Elise for for your help with with this. And so I think we will need a motion if someone would do so, that would be great. Okay, anybody? Okay, Mike.
Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion that we appoint these student commissioners to their appointed tasks as so mentioned by Sue.
Second. Denise.
Sorry, Denise. Yeah, I'm sorry. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by raising your left hands. Awesome. Unanimous. Thank you. And to the students who might be listening, thank you all so very much. We are delighted with your interest, and we hope, we very much hope that this is a future for your public service, right? We want to see you run against all of us, right? So please keep that in mind. All right. All right. Otherwise, let's move along. Now into public comments. All right, public comments by way of introduction. This is the period of the meeting whereby we discuss, we hear from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. This is list, this is limited to five minutes per speaker. And council, I remind you that this is not a time for discussion or deliberation. We are merely hearing at this point input from the public, and then we can see if it becomes an agenda item at some later date. All right, that all clear? All right. All right, Mr. Patrick Nofield, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you so much for this opportunity to share tonight. I know I've been bugging the heck out of Dan and Doug over the last few months, and they're they're probably rating to pass me on to somebody else, so I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Patrick Nofield. I'm president of Escape Lodging Company. We're based in Cannon Beach, Oregon. We are a essentially a hotel operations development company with approximately 16 hotels and restaurants, primarily in Oregon and some in Washington State. Sue, do you have control of that slide? Could you move to the next one for me, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So Escape Lodging, we have two different things we do. We, if you could go back maybe a couple, we do boutique hotels such as the Ocean Lodge in Cannon Beach, the Inn at Cannon Beach, we have the lodges. And then the next slide, we do branded hotels. These would be Marriott products. And Sue, the next slide, there you go. We have a Fairfield Marriott in the Dows, Oregon, that we built in 2014. And we, prior to the pandemic, opened a Town Place Suites by Marriott in Beaverton, right at 217 and Canyon Road. As you may know or may not know, we have a site tied up on Brucher. It's part of the Worth family site, and we have approval from Marriott to build a 79-room Marriott product there. And, you know, I've been looking at Newburgh for a long time. My mom, God rest her soul, convalesced there, so I spent a lot of time. And I saw, you know, outside of the Allison Inn, which you can't get in, and if you do get in, it's $400 a night. I thought they really need something mid-market. And we reached out to Providence. They were excited about it. We reached out to the Allison Inn as part of a referral, George Fox, ADEC, and I really think there's a need in the community. And and it's something that we're we're excited about. If you could go to the next slide, please. So this is a little rough. It says system development cost, but it's really entitlement cost. This is a cost to, based on what Newburgh has on the books right now, to get entitlement to build the hotel, and it includes not only your system development cost, but it also includes other fees such as permits, planning, and the school district fees. Now, as a comparison, I said, well, what if we didn't do a hotel and what if we built 42,000 square feet of self-storage units? What would that be? And our our folks at Hawkins went and reviewed and said it's going to cost about $275,000 in development fees or entitlement fees. Next slide, please. So that difference, of course, is about $765,000, which is significant to do a hotel versus to do a self-storage unit. Next slide, please, Sue. These are the last four projects that we've done. We begin the 80-room Fairfield. The total in room in cost entitlement cost is 225,000. We did a beautiful wine-themed boutique hotel in Richland, right on the Columbia River in 2017. All-in cost was 100,000. The Town Place Suites that we did in Beaverton recently, our all-in entitlement cost was 300,000. And then that same year, we did a 20-room addition. Had we done an 80-room hotel, the approximate cost would have been $200,000. Next slide, please. So one of the things that I've shared with both Doug and Dan is, look, if we build this hotel over a 10-year period, the city of Newburgh is going to realize $3,682,000 in transient lodging tax added to what you have now, an average of 368,000. So that's real money, real direct money that you can see. And the next slide, please. So I reached out to Todd Davidson. He's the CEO of Travel Oregon. And I said, Todd, what kind of statistics do you have as far as a direct benefit of somebody that would stay at a hotel in Newburgh on the economy? And he said, well, Patrick, we've done a study by Runyon and Associates that said in Yamhill County specifically, each trip generated $386, and he quoted dollars spent not only on lodging, but restaurants, retail, food stores, wineries, arts, culture, and recreational amenities. Next slide, please. So I took our first-year room nights, it's a number of room nights that we would sell at this hotel, and I multiplied it times an average length of stay, an average stay that a guest would be 2.2 nights is what I'm using, which equals 10,000 trips. If I take those 10,000 trips and I multiply it towards Runyon's $386 per trip, the annual spending in the community, direct economic benefit is $3,860,000. Can you go up next one, please? I I have this proposal, but before I do, there's two more things. One is the hotel's going to create between 35 and 40 full-time jobs. And a lot of people have a stigma about hospitality. You know, our managers are making six figures. Our department heads are making between 60 and 75,000. And where we are right now, especially on the coastal properties, we're paying starting wages 18 to $20 an hour. So it's not the old days where you're paying minimum wage and barely getting by, and I think a lot of it has to do with just the demand. So what I I I come to you is just for a consideration, and that would be this. Realizing that we're going to create revenue stream for the city, realizing that it's a significant entitlement cost, we would like you to consider that perhaps we'd come in with $500,000 out of pocket towards system development fees, entitlements, whatever you call it. And then we would pay the remaining balance to the city. So what, let's say it's a million 41,000 from the taxes that we collect from our guests for the first, say, 18 months of operation. It could be 18, it could be 20, but from the time the hotel is up and running, we would pay those monies that would be coming to the city would help defer the cost of those system fees. So that's what I'm considering. I'd like to vet it more. Again, Dan and Doug have been great as far as trying to work through Mayor, Mayor Rogers, and I had a conversation from pre-pandemic way back. I do think there's a need. And again, our company, we're not, we're not bottom line. We invest in community. If you if you have an opportunity just to check our track record, we're not primetime developers that come in and bang something out and move on to the next project. We're really invested, and that's what we'd like to do in Newburgh. I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'm I'm open.
All right. Well, Mr. Nofield, I'm impressed. You stayed very close to the five minutes. I'm very impressed, so.
I didn't want to get yelled at.
All right. All right. Well, as as mentioned, this is a time that we we normally don't have too much discussion back and forth during this time. But I'm I would guess we're going to see more on this. As you may have heard earlier in the meeting, SDCs are a topic that we will be discussing in greater detail. And I would guess that we'll probably hear from Dan and Doug on this a bit more in the future. But again, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you first for your for your interest in Newburgh. And we, I know that our economic development strategy has said for a long time that we need additional lodging, as you know, in this community. So thank you for that, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Rick. Thank you, council members. Appreciate it.
All right. I think we're now on to the consent calendar. James, do we have an additional item on the consent calendar? I don't know that I see it on my agenda.
No, there the I didn't have time to amend the agenda, so City Attorney Walker can explain.
Great, thank you.
Sure. As as one of the items that that we would want to include on the consent agenda today is a resolution that documents the Declaration of the State of Emergency and the fireworks ban that was approved by the council in its emergency meeting on Friday. So as has been referred to a bit previously, with the passage or the approval of the ban and the establishment of the Declaration of the State of the Emergency on Friday, we did have to do a bit of scrambling to get, you know, a resolution that's in place to to kind of document what was already approved by council. So what we're submitting to be included as part of this consent agenda is is that resolution, which would, as discussed on Friday, declare a state of emergency that would extend through August 1st as well as a fireworks ban that would go through July 19.
All right. All right. So that is it. We've got three items then on the on the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
I'll do it, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as presented. Second.
Okay, moved by Denise, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor, signify by raising your left hands. And Denise? Oh, yeah, there she is. Okay, that's unanimous. Sorry, just checking on you. All right. So that's that's unanimous. Let's move now on to new business. The subject of sidewalks. Item 9A on your agenda, and City Engineer Karen Hoffman.
Evening, Mayor, Representative Council.
Sue.
It's coming.
Sorry. I know. That's okay. I just want to make sure. I knew you were having technical difficulties earlier.
Oh, yeah.
So good evening again. So we're here tonight to talk about sidewalks, an update of where we are, and then also discussion about where we want to to move in the future. Next slide, please. So livability and sustainability are both a priority of the community vision and the city council. Just some statistics that 47% are more likely to be active at least 30 minutes a day for people who live in neighborhoods with sidewalks. They provide a tighter-knit community and safer streets. And then 20 to 30% of morning traffic congestion in urban areas is caused by drive, parents driving kids to school. Next slide, please. Within Newburgh, 14.7% of our area residents have no car, and 10% of our area residents identified as having some level of disability within the community. And then for the U.S. Department of Transportation, roadways without sidewalks have two times as many accidents as roadways with sidewalks. In fact, I'm actually have started reading a book about right away in the pedestrian pandemic of fatality, pedestrian fatalities, and and looking at what what are the root causes of some of those things. Next slide, please. So Newburgh has 116 miles of sidewalks. Many are no longer safe or functional, as you can see in some of these pictures. We also have identified critical routes that lead to high-access roads and services. Next slide, please. Those are shown on this map. Those are the orange, the orange lines are the primary critical routes. And again, that allows for us to apply for grant funding, prioritizes our city money where we can spend some money to make the most impact in the community. And we are working to create pathways to school, medical services, businesses, and recreation. Next slide, please. So what do we do now? We had this conversation with the council a little over a year ago, just before the pandemic hit. We're pretty reactive in most cases. We inspect when a complaint is received. And then when we require repairs, cost is a property owner's responsibility. We do require all development to install and or repair the sidewalks in front of their businesses or properties, and that cost is borne by the developer. For remodels or additions that are over $30,000, we do require installation or repair, and those costs are borne by the property. And then also, when we're, it's a part of a larger public capital improvement project, the city installs or repairs at its cost. Next slide, please. It's one thing that I wanted to note is right now, per the municipal code, property owners are responsible for their sidewalks. And if they fail to maintain, they could be liable for damages to any person due to negligence in failing to keep and maintain those sidewalks. Next slide, please. So about a year ago, we rolled out a residential sidewalking grant program and sidewalk loan programs because we recognized that there was a financial burden. The council directed the city staff to do that. That the program is available to residents and property owners to to make their sidewalks safe. We launched it in 2020, and we had $50,000 budgeted for the grant and $50,000 budgeted for the loan. So far, we've processed seven applications for grants, and then and four have been completed with checks provided to those property owners that have completed their their sidewalk repairs. This information is available in Spanish, and we have been working hard to try and get it out to the Latinx community also to help bridge those gaps. Next slide, please. So other strides forward that we've been making, we have, are completing sidewalks along city-owned parks. We completed Memorial Park last fall, and we will be doing Scott Levitt Park this summer. And we will be looking to do ADA ramps on critical routes starting next fiscal year. We are still working on our inventory for compliance with ADA. And then we did receive a grant for safe routes to school for improvement to the pathways along Edwards Elementary, and that'll be happening over the next year and a half. So next slide, please. So so some of the next steps, and these are questions, and there could be other other ideas out there also. So with the grant loan program, we we do want to do more community promotion. As we've heard other places tonight, 2020 has been difficult for a lot of people to to move forward with some sidewalks. So we're hoping for some more community program or community promotion, excuse me. And then we'll review and improve the rules. You know, we put together the rules, we'll see what worked and what didn't work. And try and come up with an easier process enforcement. So again, as we noted, we are in a reactive mode. We only enforce when there is a complaint provided. So do we want to strengthen that enforcement? Do we want to be more proactive and impose those consequences? Right now, the New, New, Newburgh Municipal Code allows us to give somebody ninety days in order to fix our sidewalk and then we can actually go out. The city can go out and, and build the sidewalk and then put a lien on people's property. We have not gone to that level, but it is something that, that we could do if the council so chose. And then city projects. Where, right now, we're using existing funds. If we wanted to do more city projects, maybe a local improvement district where the city went out to install additional sidewalks. You know, where would we want to look to for additional money or do we want to work within our means today with like I said, new money might be a new monthly fee or new gas tax or something along those lines. And that's pretty much what I had in looking for direction and, and feedback from the council.
All right, folks. Let's start with questions first for, for Karen. If we, if we have any questions, start with that. Go ahead, Bryce.
All right. Thank you. Awesome. As usual, our current grant program. Correct me if I'm wrong, is it will pay up to half of the cost and not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. With the exception of a five hundred dollar increase if the damages include trees. Is that right?
Right.
Do you know, like on average, I know you said this, I think if I got it right here, like one hundred and sixteen miles of sidewalk. But what are the, the average amount of costs for a sidewalk approximately?
Each panel is about a hundred, hundred and twenty-five dollars per panel. Which is about five foot long. So if you assume, you know, some of the smaller lots are twenty-five feet, you know. And then some of the larger lots could be up to fifty feet. People on corners really have, you know, sidewalks on both, both corners. So become even more challenging.
Okay. So we're thinking again, at, at best, it's paying for half, assuming it's three thousand. But it could be significantly more than that. And the way our current process is, they are reimbursed with the checks. So they have to have that money like in hand upfront. Is that correct? With the exception of the repair loan, which can be up to twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, the, the loan can go up to six thousand though. Yeah, the loan can go up to six thousand. And so it is quasi a reimbursement. We don't require them to show that they paid the bill. What we do require is that the project be done and they provide us with it, with the invoice and then we would cut the check based on that. So depending on how our timing works, we, they might not have to pay that money upfront and get a reimbursement. So, and we're, we're working hard about making that happen as quickly as we can, so.
Yeah. No, that's, that's super helpful. Okay. How about this? So thank you.
And folks, other, other questions of Karen? You know what, Karen, on the, on the grant loan program, is that available? I mean, is that just for repair or is it for installation, say if somebody's remodeling? Is that available for that as well?
We, we, what we set it up for was that it could be for, for installation, but not if it was a requirement of development. So if you were coming in to develop your property, we said that, that, that's part of the cost that you would would bear as part of the development. So that's one caveat we have put on it so far is the idea was we were hoping for current homeowners and, and those types of things to utilize more than, you know, someone coming in and doing, you know, significant additional work.
But it, but it would be eligible for somebody doing a remodel, say that exceeded the thirty thousand threshold. So if they were doing a new sidewalk, would that?
Actually technically per the code, uh, defined as development, so no. If they were doing something lower than thirty thousand, then yes, they would. And again, that's a, that's a requirement we could change if, if the council thought that it made some sense that we could change that.
The other, I guess the other question is, and this is just, you know, as people are doing, you know, they're, they're improving their properties, they're putting, you know, additional remodeling, et cetera. You know, oftentimes in some of the neighborhoods, they'll, it'll literally be a sidewalk to nowhere with, with no sidewalk on either side. So what's, what's the rationale behind that rather than say, putting the money into a future fund for development or something? So what, what's the logic there?
Well, part of it is, you know, as we've done in a lot of cases, you know, where we've done even, even half street improvements and stuff. It's, you know, it gets built as, as the development occurs. The challenge is, and you see this even with the SDCs or anything else, if they pay us a fee, say, you know, and that we would come back later, are we waiting until the properties on either side provide their fees? Or are we going to spend that money anywhere within the city? Even if, you know, it was paid for in the greens or something like that. And, and so those become the challenges. To implement a program like that, it could be done, but we'd have to think about how do we want to implement that? And is it just, they pay a fee in and it goes into one big pot and then we spend it wherever? It makes sense for the, for the new, you know, the new project, whatever that may be.
All right. Thank you. Other questions, folks? All right. Now on to, you'd like a little direction, I guess, or a little, some council thoughts on some of this. So can you refresh what you'd like to, like us to contemplate?
Certainly. So yeah, I guess one new, one question is, what do we think about the grant, grant loan program? We originally set it up with a fifty thousand for each. We have not had anybody applied for the loan program. So we could certainly, you know, switch and make the grant, you know, at seventy-five, the loan twenty-five. If, if we thought that that would provide, you know, additional benefit. We could also increase the amount that we were going to allow people to obtain. Just other thoughts, if people have heard anything, concerns, problems with the way we implemented it. That would be the first, first piece of the puzzle.
Okay. Thoughts on that, folks? Loan grant program? I mean, Doug can attest that, that nobody wants loans, right? Everybody, everybody wants, everybody wants grants, so understandable. Now remind me, remind me, is there, is there a, an eligibility criteria for the grants? I, I can't recall.
No, it's just, just a property owner. There is no, no other requirement.
All right. Anybody, any, go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so look at the, the presentation. There's a lot of good data here. Particularly around folks that use sidewalks, folks that don't have a car. The one that really stands out is sidewalks, roadways without sidewalks having two times more accidents. So there's, there's a couple of things in my mind. One, we aren't necessarily talking about building new sidewalks. Is that right? In terms of this, this statistic about roadways without sidewalks, that would not be included in this, would it?
Do you mean, could you use, we use the grant and loan program to build sidewalks?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, you could.
Yeah, if they had a gap in the sidewalk, they could certainly use it for that along with repair.
Okay. Wonderful. Um, and you might have to, to, to dig. So I don't want to put you on the spot here, uh, which I'm going to do anyway. So sorry, Karen. Much love. Do you know approximately where majority of these roads are that do not have sidewalks in Newburgh ballpark?
Um, that don't have sidewalks? Ye- yes. Actually, a lot of them are on our critical routes. Main, Main Street is, is a prime example. Elliott Road, we've talked about before. We have filled the gaps in, in Villa Road. So that's a good thing. You can, you do sidewalk. There's a big chunk in Mountain View Drive that doesn't have sidewalks. And then some, some other locations in the older part of town that don't have sidewalks. You know, down Blaine Street, there's gaps and those types of things.
Yep. Okay, that makes sense. So in terms of direction then, I wonder if we might be able to consider a process where the city, because to me, like being able to help our, our folks feel safe and reduce likelihood of death seems like it'd be a, a high priority. So I would, yeah, be interested in what a program would look like to pay for much more than just half up to, you know, fifteen hundred or required loans. I'd be interested in going much, much higher than that to particularly to build new, new sidewalks in these areas that, that would cause yeah, increased likelihood of harm or death occurring. Additionally, I think in, in general with keeping the, the program, I think being able to give access to funds above fifty percent would also be helpful. And we can, you know, maybe think through some sort of process so we could prioritize particular areas. I mean, it's noted that fifteen percent of folks don't have a car. My guess is we could probably disaggregate that by neighborhood or areas and so potentially give priority to areas where you see an increased level of folks who don't have cars. Just as an idea off the top of my head, but I think being able to provide more than fifty percent, because that's, that could still be a significant barrier for folks who'd be interested in helping protect their neighbors as well as reduce liability, but just don't have that, that money in hand.
All right. Other comments, folks, on that particular subject, on that particular item? On that one for the grant, oh, go ahead, Mike.
So what is the interest rate if somebody wants to take a loan? Did you say that? And maybe I, I'm sorry, I might have missed it. But what was it? What's the interest rate on it?
Let me look that up. I, I don't know.
I think it's four percent right now. Yeah.
Oh, that's, oh, that's pretty good.
Other, other questions, comments, folks? Anything? All right. A couple of thoughts, Karen, on the, on the grant loan program, particularly probably for the grant. You know, again, I get stuck on this, but I'd like to see it need based. I think that would extend the money. And, and need base is not real difficult to determine. I'd like to see it focused on the critical routes, particularly almost if it means we have to go up door by door and target people who have bad sidewalks on our critical routes. And I would like to see it as long as the provision for need expanded to remodels. Even over that thirty thousand dollar thresholds, again, if the need is, if we can determine need. So those are my thoughts. But I really, but again, I'd like to emphasize particularly that critical routes. We've talked about it before, whether it's from, you know, Friends View to downtown or whatever it is, just to really focus on those, that those are, those are safe or as safe as they can be.
So Mayor, when you talk about need based, do you, would you want it to be that if, if you didn't, if you weren't below this threshold, that you couldn't get a grant? Or, or would you want it more that they would get first dibs? Right now, we've set it up on the first come, first served basis. And if, if you wanted to do some other type of prioritization, we would have to gather them all up and then at some point evaluate them and then hand out the money that way? Or what were you thinking when you say need basis? Only those people could get it?
Yeah, just anecdotally, I mean, there's folks in, in my neighborhood that could certainly use it, but they just don't have the money to even to get it, to get it started, to pay for the fifty percent. So it seemed to me that those folks are the ones that we'd really want to target rather than somebody who has the money and just hasn't done it. So that would be the thought. So it, it would still, could still be first come, first served. And we could establish a threshold, whether it's, you know, like, you know, housing affordability at a percentage of median income or whatever it is, which should be fairly easy to, to prove with a tax return. But anyway, that, that would be the thought. But again, I'm not trying to create more work. And maybe, maybe first, more publicity for the program, more targeting, maybe even flyers in the water bill kind of thing. That, you know, to get more, more traction for it because you would, you would like to see. One other thing is, do you have a list of sort of, you know, people who do this service that you put out there for folks to contact to get a, get an estimate and all? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we actually have a list of, of qualified contract, concrete contractors on the website for people to, to utilize and, and reach out to.
Okay, that's great. Awesome. Yeah. So that would be the, that would be, you know, my thought, but maybe, maybe it is just a matter of targeting. But Denise?
Did we ever follow up on having teenagers learn from the contractors to try to get that, that program into this program? Into the grant program or into the loan program?
If we weren't able to get a contractor willing to do that in Newburgh for the season, I think we can continue to try.
Sorry, Rick.
No, hey, no, no, hey. Yeah, well, and we know concrete people. So yeah. Well, yeah, I'll, I'll bring that up. I'll bring that up to some folks that we know. If we're still looking. So that was that. Was it Willamette Workforce Partnership? That was the, the program, right?
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Okay, thanks. Bryce?
Yeah, sorry, sorry to hop on this. Could you maybe speak to how the initial fifty percent as a an amount was decided upon?
I think it was just, we were trying to make sure that we could provide to as many people who might want to do it. So that, that's the only reason fifty percent seemed at the time, you know, a good, good fit. But again, there was no, there's nothing that says it has to stay at fifty percent, you know.
Yeah. I'm guessing that the goal of the program in general is to incentivize, right, people to begin to adjust their sidewalks. I think legit, not legitimately, logically, if we were to increase a percentage, we would get more participation, right? Or you'd think?
We would hope.
Is there anything, and then this is more so to other counselors, but I know already threw it out there, but would anybody feel uncomfortable with increasing that percentage? At least for a season to see if it in, increases participation. And obviously there are budgetary concerns here that we'd have to talk about, but ultimately our concern is helping create safer sidewalks for folks. And we aren't seeing the movement we'd like, then we should, I think, consider raising the percentage just to see if we're able to, to move that needle. Full disclosure, I'd be down for a hundred percent in some areas, because I know for some, even seventy-five percent of a four thousand dollar, they still are a thousand dollars out of pocket and that's way too much, right? And that, that's a significant barrier to me, but my guess is folks might balk at like paying for a hundred percent. But I'm gonna try to shoot for maybe somewhere in the middle. I would love to, to hear thoughts from other counselors though about raising the percentage to try to get more people. And again, we can prioritize based on need, like Rick said, but that, that's what I would push for.
Let's see, Mike?
So I, I don't have a problem with, I think that, Bryce, I think that's a good idea. Let's, I mean, let's just try it. If we're not getting enough people involved, then either they just don't want to pay the money out of their pocket regardless of what it is, or, you know, maybe they, maybe by raising the percentage up, that could be more of an incentive. So I don't think we've got anything to lose by maybe doing that. And I would, I would go along with something like that.
All right. On this notion of targeting, I mean, is that, is that just a bureaucratic nightmare to try to target, you know, specific property owners on specific routes?
I think that would go back to the enforcement piece of the, of the puzzle. You know, that would take, you know, additional effort and, and we would be pointing, you know, the question comes up is if we went to, to, you know, your house and knocked on the door and said, your, your sidewalk is broken, you need to fix it. And here's a program, but you still couldn't come up with the money. What are we gonna, are we gonna do, go down the enforcement route then? To, to force you to do that? Or are we going to just let it lie? Or, you know, how to, where would we want to go from there? Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, sort of dovetailing on what, what. Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, sort of dovetailing on what what Bryce was saying is that, you know, if hypothetically, there's a something on whatever, Main Street, that's got a a big hole in the sidewalk. And you go, you know, if you say, hey, listen, there's a big hole in your sidewalk, we're not here to enforce, but we're offering a program. And if you qualify, it can be done a hundred percent for no cost to you, kind of thing. That, that's what I, that's where I wouldn't want to tie the enforcement, except to identify areas that we'd really like to see fixed, because again, back to critical roots. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, that that would be, you know, an effort on on our part to go out and and, you know, evaluate all of those locations and and knock on those doors and reach out to those folks directly.
Mayor, in this, this, Mayor, this is Doug.
Oh, sorry, Doug, one second. Just the, we have that sidewalk program that was the, that identified where there were sidewalk programs, whatever that, remember that, that Roy Gathercole was all over that project? That data should be available, but anyway, sorry, Doug, go ahead.
Oh, no, Mayor, I was just gonna say, you know, some of our past conversations, when we were talking about the affordable housing and, you know, people going for grants and not going for loans and so forth. I mean, one of the things is when we get into the issue of need, maybe we identify a critical route and things that need to be done, and you're knocking on the door, and then we have to define what need is. You know, is it eighty percent of median family income? Is it sixty percent, whatever? And then we get into the issue of, do the property owners want to share that information? Because we have to confirm. I'm not saying it's possible to do, it's just, so we could talk about just programmatically and a lot, you know, additional effort that needs to go into it. We need to take that into consideration as well. It's doable, it just takes more work.
Yeah, and maybe that's something that that if, I don't know, if it wouldn't take too much for you all to look at that and just think about that. The other thing is, you know, maybe there's, there's citizens, you know, in addition to Roy Gathercole out there for whom this would be a project that they'd be interested in working and going around and actually identifying spots on critical routes in front of this house, that, which wouldn't also be the city, right? We wouldn't be the enforcement guys, it'd be just neighbors being neighbors kind of thing. But anyway, that, but maybe, maybe an idea of what this might take to wind up would be, would be useful, so. Denise, did you have a, did you have a comment?
I'm back on it. I'm go, I moved on to enforcement, is that where we are? Because I do have a comment on that. I have, the imposed consequences is a little scary for me, because when people are already struggling and then you start imposing the consequence on top of that and they own their house. I've been there, like, I, any breakdown in my house was near death and losing our house for like five years. So, so that really, I I would have a really hard time with imposing cash or making them do it if they couldn't afford it, because that's, I could tell you, that's a little stressful, that's a lot stressful.
I would just comment from Supervising Brian Korn and Code Compliance. I mean, he's got some very longstanding sidewalk cases, in part, I think, because he's not interested in sort of going to that level, you know, of of financial penalties and those kinds of things. But he does need to, we need to figure out, are we moving those on, off the docket? Or how do we want to enforce that, which is obviously why Karen's bringing it up? And, I mean, I think to the extent that we can identify routes that we're interested in and maybe do that door knocking, or, you know, have a softer approach where it's not someone being, you know, a case being started on on someone's house. Maybe that's the kinder, gentler, and it gets compliance, if you will, or, you know, gets information in their hands that they may not know about this program. This has only been around for a year, so we can tweak as we go, but, you know, certainly the approach can be tweaked.
We, the other thought would be, you know, if if you did, and if we were concerned about the money coming back into a grant program, I mean, the other part, the other thought would be to lean the property at for any time when, whether, if there was a transfer of the property ownership, that that money would come back. Again, it's another thing to do, but it is a way to ensure that you could fund some kind of revolving program for sidewalk repairs. So that's, you know, that's a thought, too, but that may get way too, way too technical, but anyway. All right, what else, Karen? Were there other things you wanted input on?
So I think, you know, the other, the other piece of this was, you know, did, did we want the city to take more of an active role in actually doing sidewalk projects? I mean, just full-scale building sidewalks? And then if 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 the answer to that is yes, then we need to evaluate, one, how much can we do with the existing funding that we have? And and then, two, does the council want us to look at other funding opportunities? Whether that's a monthly fee, I I know that's not something we want to talk about, but where some of those options may come from to help fund that. We, you know, we have plugged in a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the next several years to do sidewalks and and ADA ramps. And and we'll do as much as we can with that, with that dollar amount, but so that that would be the next piece of the puzzle. If if the council does want the the city to move forward, do we want to move forward right now with existing funds, get as much as we can? Or do we want to look at other options for more funding to move forward more?
Aren't we, aren't we also hopeful that we're going to get money out of the state? Like four hundred thousand or something?
We did receive that, as far as I know, we haven't actually received it, but we were allocated that. That's how it was done. Karen and I are both like, that was easy. You ask and and, you know, thank you to Representative Post for putting that in there, but, you know, that was granted as far as we know. That was for ADA ramps, those specifically, I think, on those critical routes, those being expensive and things that the city typically does, rather than a property owner putting those in.
All right, guys, thoughts on on, you know, a way to fund it more into the future? Thoughts on that?
If I can express the unpopular opinion, would be that it would make a whole lot more sense to me that the city do it in the sense that, you know, then it's not piecemeal. And, you know, if there's a fee or some other way to capture the the money, not taking responsibility for the sidewalks. And I see James jumping, possibly, like, don't take the liability. But at some level, you know, it's just that that question of, you know, if we want to get it done, we should probably get it done, you know? And so if that being fee or whatever other structure to get their money and having it still be the the resident's responsibility for paying for the said sidewalk, I think you then have a standard sidewalk, you've got sidewalks more places, and it makes some level of sense.
Mike?
So if the city did it, could we just have the property owner just pay whatever the the labor is for that? I mean, would that be a reduced enough where maybe, you know, people could could do that? That maybe had a problem financially, they still would maybe be able to do that, would that be an option? I like your idea, though, if we're gonna do it, I kind of like the idea of the city doing it, then you're not piecemealing it, but maybe property owner covers the the labor part.
Yeah, if we wanted to go down that path, we could certainly set up a local improvement district where, you know, and and that's part of the allocation of 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 the funding, right? You know, the city would would pay some portion of it, and then the property owner would pay some portion of it that would come back to the council. In that local improvement district process, that comes back to the council for them to approve that allocation of funding or allocation of cost to the property owner. So that's certainly one way to to look at it and and break out some of those costs, if the council wanted to go there.
Go ahead, Bryce.
Yeah, I think absolutely on the the critical roots, I mean, they're called critical roots, so it seems as though that should be a city responsibility. I also think it'd be interesting to potentially provide opportunities for the community to be able to advocate as to why their their area should be considered a critical route. It sounds like it's a combination of state, federal, and then local knowledge, which some might sort of contest as being somewhat subjective, but I think if we say it's critical, we should, and we've already identified those areas, we should commit as a city to doing that. And then others can, like I said, try to advocate, so why they should be added to the list of what's critical or do some sort of sliding range of a grant program if they fall outside of that critical zone. In terms of how it's paid for, I think I would be interested in maybe coming back to this conversation. I mean, you're the expert, or other folks could give feedback as to what that looks like, whether it's fees here or there, nobody likes it, but I I don't have enough knowledge to be able to say how. But I do think covering criticals is critical.
All right, other, other comments for for Karen? You know, just for whoever might be listening in, as far as I understand it, critical routes are routes, like I mentioned, like from Friends View, like from George Fox to the to downtown, from schools in the area, this kind of parks, et cetera. So the routes that are most often traveled, I've said this before, and I'm not totally being facetious, but I would see it as a real estate benefit to whoever was considering purchasing a property that the Realtor should say, hey, it's on a critical route in Newburgh, which gets you right downtown or to a park or whatever. But it should be a feature, so anyway, but that's my two cents on the subject. So Karen, did that give you enough to go on or too much or too little?
I think it it's something we can definitely, we'll look to modify some of the grant and loan program, you know, maybe change some of the requirements there. And definitely prioritize, publicize more, we had certainly planned to do that, especially as part of the summer sustainability, it was on Lacy's List to kind of push some more information out about that. But we can certainly look at raising, you know, how much we pay as part of the grant program, raising that dollar amount up or that percentage up and and even the dollar amount and and focus on critical, maybe we'll do some kind of prioritization, focusing on critical routes, need-based. I'll reach out to a couple of other people here within the city and see if we can come up with something that makes some sense. That's not too onerous of a, of a process to go through. And then and then I'll start to look at the critical routes and what the, those costs may be. And we'll see what what we can plug into current funding, what we would need to add to, and then we can come back and back to the council with options.
All right, well, that's, that sounds great. Bryce, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not saying, I know you all are gonna hate me, I've talked like five times on this one. And this might be further down the line, but can we, as we start looking to what it would look like to get it done, prioritize contractors who are willing to to work with the program we previously talked about? I don't know, now I know it sounds like Denise has a friend, not that we are wanting to get into like outsourcing it to friends, but I think prioritizing folks who are willing to participate in that program would be something that I think we should do, definitely.
That would be a conversation that we would have to have with the city attorney about, because it's contrary to public contracting law unless the council does something else with some exemption from public bidding or something like that. So that would have to be a conversation we have with with the city attorney to see if that, something like that could happen or not.
But I think to the point, you know, we're also able to continue an interest with the Willamette Workforce folks, and I think they do an annual decision as to cities they're willing to partner with on this, and so we can get back in that queue and try.
On that Willamette Workforce Partnership, I mean, yeah, I, yeah, I know, I know, you know, flatwork contractors out there, but does it have to be focused solely on Newburgh? Because these guys don't just do work in Newburgh, right? They do work all over the place.
I think the program was, I want to say they did independence, and then I believe they were looking to expand. And so we were on the list and had a slot, but we we just couldn't get a contractor willing to work in town. You know, I think part of that was the pandemic, post-pandemic kind of thing of just trying to to get get work, period, and not necessarily want to spend the time on on the mentoring and and all of that stuff. But, you know, certainly, one of the things where we can get back in the queue there, and and yeah, I think they're doing it all over the place. It's just expanding slowly.
Well, I was just, I was just wondering, like I said, if we reach out to somebody and they do work in Sherwood and Portland and everywhere else, and they want to have this this intern involved in that, I I just wonder if that's practical. Maybe we just bring that up at some later date or something for a question.
Yeah, the the intern wouldn't be exclusive to Newburgh, sorry, it would be the partner, you know, the the flatwork contractor having an intern or whatever it is, an apprentice through this program. And then we would be one of the areas they would do projects, we would find them projects, in essence, to help train that person.
Awesome, all right, well, let's, everybody, you know contractors who do, you know, do flatwork? Let's line them up for the next go-round for that. All right, anything else on this subject? All right, all right, well, Karen, thank you, thank you very much. And we'll wait to hear more on the subject of sidewalks, so, very good, thank you. All right, on to item ten A, Council Committee Reports, anything, folks, from your various other activities? All right, hearing none, let me, we will now go to item eleven on your agenda, and let me do the script to announce we are moving into executive session. All right, I will now read the announcement required to hold an executive session. After the announcement, the Zoom meeting will terminate, and the council will enter into a separate Zoom meeting not open to the public. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192662 regarding real property. Repetitive signatories of the news media and designated staff and other persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council meeting will adjourn, and we will not return to open session. We will now terminate this public Zoom meeting and begin the executive session. So everybody will sign off this and sign back in. Do you want a five-minute break? You want to go straight to it?
Great.
I'm getting, let's go to it. All right, let's go to it, we'll see you in a second.